Good evening. I'd like to call the November 7, 2022, Davie County Commissioners Meeting to order. I'll ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in the invocation.
Pray with me. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come here and do the business of this great county. Father, in freedom. Father, we're free because men and women have spilled their blood on battlefields. Father, men and women serve us in our fire departments, our law enforcement, our EMS. Men and women teach our young people in schools. And Father, we just thank you that you have called each one of them to serve. We pray, Father, tonight, that you give us wisdom, discernment, knowledge, and understanding to do what you've called us to do. We pray for those that are less fortunate, those that are hurting right now. And, Father, we pray that as leaders of this great county and this great nation, that we would step forward with servants' hearts, Father, to take on a mission that only you could give us, that only you could empower us to do. And, Father, we'll give you praise, glory, and honor for it. We pray this prayer in Christ's name. Amen.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll go to our Ethics and Conflicts Disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant North Carolina General Statute 168, H86, and Davie County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December 2, 2019, I've asked each of you before you adopt the agenda if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which come for the board for a vote this evening. If so, please speak up and let the board know now before the agenda is adopted.
Mr. Vogler, I will be making a statement when we get to item 10-1 on the agenda, but I have nothing to add to that at this point. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else speak up? I conclude at this point in time, there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Next, I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Some who, Mr. Chair.
A motion of a second?
Second.
Motion of a second. All in favor? Thank you. Next, we'll move to public comment period. Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Chair, we've had four, about five people sign up for the public comment section. And I will let each one of you know that during your public comment section signup, I've got your name, and you've got your topic. And each one of you is allowed three minutes to talk unless there is an organized group, in which event you have up to five minutes to talk. I'm the designated timekeeper. I will be showing some cards when there's two minutes, one minute, 30 seconds remaining, and also when it's time for you to stop. You're to address the board as a whole and not ask any individual questions of any board member, exchanges back and forth between the board. And other than that, you don't have to make any presentations. A total of 30 minutes is allowed to the board for public comments of each monthly meeting and upon the end of the 30 minutes, if there's any individuals that's left at that point in time, they would be entitled to be first in line to speak at the next meeting. We've only got five, so that should not be a problem.
Mr. Attorney, Ms. Wilson, did you want Cindy Wilson? Can you add her? She didn't know she had to sign in.
And what's your topic on, Ms. Wilson? On what?
On the work in that school.
Okay. Okay. And with that said, the first individual that signed up is Todd Naylor, and he says he's with a fire funding group for five minutes.
Thank you, Council. Chairman, Commissioners, Manager, since I pleaded with you the past two meetings, I figured I'd come back tonight and kind of share my, the outcome of the vote that you had last time regarding the $492,000. If I didn't, I'd be remiss in my duties as chief. You had an opportunity to help the 10 lowest-funded departments in the county, including our rescue squad, move to a closer funding base that would better support our financial needs while still giving the larger departments a moderate increase. Instead, you chose to increase the larger departments, again, making the funding gap wider that we've been trying to close up. In my case, a neighboring department who I share about 10 miles of district line with, my eastern border now receives $618,000 after the last meeting, and we're receiving $250,000. That's the difference of $368,000 of neighboring departments there. Last year, they received $290,000 more than I did, so you can see that the gap's getting bigger instead of smaller. In my opinion, we can't solve this problem with the same thinking process that created it. We've got to do something different. I know we've talked about this a lot, and Chief Keaton and I have offered several options for funding that would better to serve our lesser-funded departments while still allowing the larger departments to grow. And, you know, counties that border us have implemented funding models and strategies to improve their funding distribution and have shown positive results. We've shared those with y'all and just chosen not to look in that direction. I do appreciate Commissioners Jones and Finney for supporting our version of a funding plan. They both seem to have a fair understanding of the needs and recognize the disparity in our present mechanism, and I wished that the other three would kind of support that as well. As I said in our September meeting, we continue to support sales tax referendum, but we just don't have any guarantees that that's going to pass on a ballot when it happens. And if it does pass, we don't know how the distribution's going to be. If it continues to be the way it has been, it's just going to keep putting us further apart. So, thank you for allowing me to share my comments. And on a personal note, Commissioner Jones, I appreciate your support and your stance on the things that you mentioned in the comments last meeting. Certainly deception is a big alternative to coming in the last days, and we certainly hope that our board will continue to look at those things and make the best decisions moving forward for our children. Thank you, guys, for letting me speak, and I hope you have a good night.
Thank you, Chief.
Next, we got Andrew and his, did you say Askew?
Austin.
Austin. Austin. Okay. And it's on Cana Road rezoning.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Austin. I'm here again to speak tonight about the rezoning of the 100-acre property on Cana Road to General Industrial. Last month, you heard from a number of people. You've heard people, the suits, tell you this isn't the first of these meetings, they've been to before. The neighbors always oppose. Well, of course they do. They live there. You've heard the people who actually will be affected tell you they don't want to live across from an industrial park. They would not have bought their house had it faced an industrial park. I asked the board to consider a few points. The suits have told you one thing, and the residents have told you another. Who stands to gain from this rezoning? Will it be the suits who walk away once the sale is completed, bearing no responsibility on the future of the site? Or will it be the residents? It should be noted that the neighbors and residents of Cana Road will not benefit from this project. No check will be issued to our pockets once the sale goes through, no campaign donation made, and no political favor gained. Our pockets won't be lined, but those suits sure will be. It was the people who elected each and every member of this board, the people you represent. Each member of this board was elected to represent the people of Davie County, not the money of Davie County. The suits have asked you to follow the Comprehensive Growth Plan. This non-binding plan only designates this area as a future growth area by 2040. It also represents the northernmost point on U.S. 601 that's designated as a future growth area. The Comprehensive Plan also asks that Davie County preserve the rural nature of the county. Is a blank check for industrial development the best way for the county to move forward? Let's look at another area that's been given a blank check after the board was handed a development plan. The industrial park being built behind the sheriff's office is shaping up to be both an eyesore and a traffic nightmare. The county will continue to deal with issues regarding this development. This is what happens when a developer is given a blank check to rezone. Do we have to wait to see if Cana Road becomes another blank check gone wrong? You've been asked to write that blank check today. You've been asked to approve rezoning, not a plan, not a traffic study, not an industrial park. Whatever information you're handed regarding these plans is absolutely non-binding. With this in mind, the board must reject this proposal in the name of community interest, not in the name of money. Thank you.
Next is Jimmy Foster, 601 Cana Road.
I'm Jimmy Foster. I live at 240 Chance Lane, Moxville off 601, and my property joins the Blackwelder property. My concern is that all the runoffs are going to be coming to my property, which it already is. And I'm having problems, and been having problems for the last three or four years with all the runoff coming into my property, having fish kills, oil spills, chemicals spills, and all coming in there, and it's just one person there right now. You put four or five houses in development, I mean, industrial buildings in there with the people coming in and out, and there's going to be oil spills, there's going to be contaminants that's going to come into my property. I have here some pictures of that property, but first of all, I want to tell you this. I asked for permission first to go get them. Number one is a spillway on Blackwelder's property. It is four feet below the water level. The dam has been breached, and rolls of hay used tried to fill the breach. Hay rolls used. Number three is hay rolls used in breach. And number four is where the dams washed out. Dam is breached, and has bathtubs, sinks, toilets, water heaters, sofas, and more to try to stop the flow of water runoff that has entered my lake since 2019 is number six. And over, fish kill has been right at 600 killed since 2019. Dumped and buried cloth from Blackwelder Manufacturing and Monley Garment Company is what's in the bag, and there's ditches full of it. And they've been, they've been put there since 1960. So you know, there's got to be some type of pollution, because clothes you have nowadays, you can throw them outside three years, and they're rotted. So it's got to be polyester or something. I don't know, but that's what the ditches are filled with. And I myself have been on one of the trucks that took the cloth and stuff in and dumped it back when I was a kid. I'd ride at Monley Company, Garment Company, to the Blackwelder farm, where they would take and kick it off the trucks. I'd go to the Blackwelder Manufacturing to where they would do the same. The only thing I'm worried about is my property is like a funnel all the way around. 601 to my property is a hundred feet drop, and it goes through wetlands, and it also goes through Blackwelder's lake, come to my lake, and everything there is fed by springs. And my concern is, is I'd like to leave the property to my grandkids, not to some industrial park. That's it.
Next is Alice Brown on the budget.
First, I'd like to thank all five of you for your service and your commitment. And I'm going to speak to something that's dear to my heart. I want to applaud Sharon Anderson for her letter to the editor last week, where she addressed running for school boards. And one of the things that was pointed out was that the loudest forces are not always the majority of voters, and two, that parents aren't the only stakeholders in public education. As a stakeholder, this is why I'm standing here. I want to go back and recap some history. In 1957, the launching of Sputnik by the Soviets put the United States in a panic mode, and thus Congress passed the National Defense Education Act, and billions of dollars was put into our educational system in the U.S. A focus was put on math and science to prepare students for the future, even beginning in elementary school with science projects and the like. We expect students to learn critical thinking skills that we trust will follow them into adulthood. When I Google "world-class education," it says that the United States was first in the 20th century and is in the 21st century, that we are a world leader in education. For instance, we have, we were the first to have universal secondary education, and we were the first to extend higher education beyond the elite class. So after 1957, the investment in what was urgent did pay off. I know that the budget here in Davie County, public education is an enormous piece of the pie. However, I feel like the investment could not be any better than putting it into education, because I know we have a reputation for having an excellent school system and that this system does attract new residents. When I Googled again "world-class education" versus "global education," it says that world-class education is one that works well for all children regardless of their starting point. And global education helps students develop their capacity to be informed, open-minded, responsible, and sensitive and responsive to diverse perspectives. And this is why I think an investment into our students is so urgent. I want us to continue to be able to run with bin on horses when it comes to education. Thank you.
Next, we have Emily Austin, Cana Res zoning.
Good evening, Commissioners. I debated about whether or not to come and speak again. I don't like confrontation. I don't like conflict. I'd rather we all just get along, but I think there's too much at stake for the people who are going to be directly impacted by this to sit idly by. Last time we were all here, I think we heard two distinctly different viewpoints. You heard the residents of Cana Road talk about how it will impact us and how we will be forced to live with inevitable conflicts and issues that arise from this development versus the folks who will financially benefit from it. I ask you to hear the people who ultimately have to live with this. You know, they talk a lot about the Comprehensive Development Plan. You know, I've dealt a lot with things that involve public comment and opinion and whatever else. You know, it's hard to get people to come and offer their insight on things like that. It's not until you get to a situation like this where the neighbors come and say, hey, here's our concerns, we don't see how it impacts us, until times like this. I know what the Comprehensive Plan says, but I ask you to hear the people who live here, the people who have to deal with the traffic problems, the runoff problems, and everything else that inevitably arises from this. I read the article in the Enterprise last week, offering suggestions about the potential conflict for interest. I ask y'all, if y'all are going to make a decision, that the people who live in this community clearly do not want, and have said to y'all, we don't want this here. I ask you to please do it with the utmost transparency and integrity on this. Thank you very much, and I hope y'all can make the right decision in the best interest of Davie County.
Next, we have Ms. Cindy Wilson, Cana Road property.
Thank you again for your service. I really don't seem like I have a dog in this race, because I live off Farmington Road. But knowing what I'm living with now, the Wallace Farm, nice odor all summer when it wind blows this way, and the Gallants odor when it blows this way, and Farmington Road mess that's being built now so that I can't get out of my house, because everybody's trying to cut through Pine Brook, Farmington Road. Sheriff can tell you it's a 30-minute wait in the mornings and afternoons if you happen to come at the wrong time. So on behalf of these people, I know what it's coming, and I know what they're going to have to put up with, and if you have any sanity at all, you won't approve another industrial park. We've got Mr. Junkers, we've got Steel Bethel Church Road, Millen Road, now Farmington Road. We've got enough industrial areas in here. We're going to end up being one major cesspool of industrial waste if we're not careful. That having been said, I don't know what your statement is going to be when it comes time to come up, but I do have a concern for the Commissioning Board. There is a company named Easy Street Properties. Are any of you familiar with that at all?
I am.
Okay. I believe you're one of the co-owners. In the book, 1209, page 720, in the deed books, on January 28, 2022, Easy Street Properties purchased the land adjacent to this industrial park from Jeffrey Lee and Belinda Cook, who live in Wake Forest, North Carolina, who probably had no knowledge of what's about to happen or may happen with this property. I feel personally that this is a conflict of interest, Mr. Renninger, for you to be sitting on the board and voting on this or making a decision on this, since you have a personal vested interest with property adjoining this industrial park. If it's zoned industrial, you stand to make quite a bit of money. In addition to some other properties this year, you're looking at pretty good. You've got a great cushion going. In addition to that, in April of 2022, one of your neighbors purchased that land, and it just makes me wonder, you know, I'm not saying you're unethical, it could be totally above board, but it has the essence and the appearance of some impropriety for you to be up here voting on something that you own property adjacent to and that you have a vested interest in and make a profit on. It would appear that it would be similar to stock insider trading, and I just wanted my opinion to be heard, and I appreciate it so much. And for the sake of all these people here who have to live with this, Cana was known as the promised land. It's probably how Cana Road got its name. We ain't going to have any promised land if you keep rezoning. We got spot rezoning for a bar to have alcohol at the corner of Heim's Church and 601, totally out of the town limits, and that was a one-on-deal. So these people don't need an industrial park right across the road from that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all we had sign up for public comment section at the regular public comment period.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next, we'll move to our presentations. We have Davie County Schools here tonight. I'll call on Jeff Wallace.
And team, thank you. Commissioners, good to see you. Mr. Barnett, everyone, thank you. There we go. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here again. Jeff Wallace, Superintendent Davie County Schools. And one of our goals tonight is just to provide a little bit of an overview and an update on a couple of things that we've got going, and then some of this will focus on our dealing with COVID and post-COVID, hopefully post-COVID, and those things. But we, I want to, again, I recognize our staff. We have Ms. Jenda Haynes, our Assistant Superintendent, with us. Ms. Jen Line, she's our Chief Academic Officer. Mr. Clay Harris is our Chief Operations Officer, and we have two of our board members, and I hope no one slipped in the back. We have Mr. Doug Potts, he's with us, and Ms. Wendy Horn. So thank you both for being here tonight as well. Couple of things that's going on. Speaking of building, we are making renovations are taking place at the, what was currently called K Building. It will not always be called K Building. Someone stopped me in my tracks, said, surely you're not going to keep calling that K Building. And I said, no, we're not. But the renovations are taking place. We're very pleased with that, and it will be the home of our virtual school that we started, and allows us to be flexible. It will also be how some of our, we're spread out in various buildings, as our sheriff once was, and our current building's like 113 years old. So we love parts of it, but there's parts that we really don't like. But we will be able to move our administrative staff, along with our K Building school, into that, and hopefully Davie Construction is doing that work, and our goal is still to be in there by May or be completed by May and be moving that shortly after that. Our enrollment for the past five years, like many rural districts, have seen a decline. Fortunately, in Davie County, you're going to hear a little bit more about that. We did not see a significant decline, but for this past year, we saw an allotment that had increased by only 20, but just north of 6,000 students, in which we are floating right around that 6,000 mark now. So that's a very positive sign. Mr. Barnett is aware that we have worked with a demographer, Dr. Jerome McKibben, that we started this work, or started talking to him three or four months ago. We wanted to get our day 20 and day 40 enrollment numbers, and that just happened this past week, so we're getting that information to Dr. McKibben, and then he will do a forecast, a demographic forecast for us in the county, which you all have participated or will be participating in that. I will be sharing that out with you as well. So those are a few primary topic pieces, but again, just want to, the team's going to share some things with you tonight about our response to COVID and where we are today, which you've seen across our nation that kids have not performed as well, and that's not a surprise to anyone. In Davie County, our kids took a setback also, but we weren't quite as bad as some others. But I'm not here to compare ourselves to others necessarily. It's about us continuing to get better. Let's deal with the situation. Let's move forward, and that's what we're doing. Part of the way through COVID, we revamped our strategic plan, which I have a visual of here tonight. I'm not going to go through great detail, but you see our two overarching goals are the 90% graduation rate and meet and exceed growth in all of our schools. Currently, our graduation rate's just slightly below 87%. We took a little bit of a setback from the year past, that we were a little over 88%, but that's one of our, again, primary goals, and everything underneath that lends itself to meeting that. And the other primary goal is to meet and exceed our growth in every school. And Ms. Line will share some other things with you about our curriculums and things that we're working toward, what we're doing to meet these two goals. Ms. Haynes will speak with you about staffing and HR updates, and I'm sure you're aware of the difficulties. Everyone's aware of the difficulties of staffing. And then Mr. Harris will provide some things, an update on finances. We'll be glad to take your questions. You always ask good questions. I hope that if you will, raise your hand, or just ask us, you don't have to raise your hand, sorry. Just ask us, but if you want to wait until the end, we'll be glad to do that as well. So I will turn it over to Ms. Jen Line, our Chief Academic Officer at this time.
If you can't tell, we're from school system. Raise your hand. All right. All right. Good evening. This is a visual we have referred to frequently for the past few years in our school districts, and this is big picture. The arrows can not only apply to the world of education, but to most organizations. The individual arrows represent things such as various initiatives, programs, focus areas within the organization. In our school district, our goal is to ensure that all of our arrows are aligned, and so we've been saying that you can go into any school building and you'll hear them talk about aligning arrows lately. And we want to make sure that we're all headed in the same direction, pre-K through 12th grade, in all schools and all departments. This creates an even stronger system towards the work that we're trying to sustain, no matter who's in any specific position at the time, or no matter what programs or initiatives are in place at the federal level, at the state level, local level, or within the schools. This concept of aligned arrows comes from professional development that's related to a book that we reference often now called "Leading a High Reliability School." The lead author is Dr. Robert Marzano. You may have heard of him. He is the guru in educational research and best practices. His work on HRS is based on many years of research on HROs, which I'm sure you've heard of, high reliability organizations. The foundation of this work says that in order for any organization to be successful and sustain over time, we have to have continuous improvement and a mindset of continuous improvement. So in high reliability schools, in order to be a high reliability school or a district, there are three required levels. And so this is what we're working toward. We are currently working on Level One, which requires every school and department to work toward having a safe, supportive, and collaborative culture. And then we're going to begin working on Level Two next, second semester, which will be effective teaching in every classroom. And then the following year, we'll begin to work on establishing a guaranteed and viable curriculum. The key there is to make sure that we sustain each level as we move on to the next. All right, and that's very big picture, but I'm going to move on to some specifics. So we do know how to spell. That does say letters, L E T R S. And that stands for, as you can see there, Language Essentials of Teaching, Reading, and Spelling. So if you talk to about any elementary school teacher or preschool teacher, this may be a topic that would come up. Letters is a professional development that's required at the state level by NCDPI. It's a very comprehensive training and provides teachers and administrators with a tremendous amount of knowledge and evidence-based practices and tools they can use in the classroom. The state rolled out this training in three cohorts. It started in August of 2021. Davie County Schools was in Cohort Two, which began in January of 2022. If you ask anyone, an elementary school teacher or pre-K teacher about this training, and I'm sure they would talk about the quality of the training, the quality of the facilitators, and overall the materials as well. However, they will probably also tell you about the amount of time that this training takes. If you look there, it is a tremendous amount of time for our teachers in pre-K. There's a year's worth of training, 37 hours administrators, another year training, 42 hours. And all of our certified teachers, they are doing this training through January 22nd through December 2023, excuse me, January 2022 through December 2023, and it adds a total of 170 hours. So looking at that required time, we have definitely looked at our calendar this past year or this year, excuse me, at 2022, 23 school calendar with the training requirements as a priority. So we took our professional days as well as increased the number of early release days to make sure that a good majority of this work could be completed within those days. And last, I want to share with you something else that is around literacy, but this is pre-K through 12th grade. This is another acronym. We are notorious for acronyms in education. LIS, and LIS stands for, again, Literacy Instruction, excuse me, Literacy Instructional Standards. And these are rolled out by NCDPI. It's recently provided us with specific instruction standards for all districts. That creates a common framework around literacy and language. So even if you are in a specific content area, might be math, science, social studies, this is something that will help create that common language around literacy instruction. The plan is for us to provide professional development and for the state to provide professional development this year. And it will be fully implemented in 2024, 25. The main components you may see of these standards are phonics instruction, comprehension, and writing. All right, next, I will have asked Jenda Haynes, our Assistant Superintendent and Director of Human Resources, to come up and share.
Should I ask you a question?
Yes, absolutely.
This is, I guess, a curriculum issue. I, last month, I spoke because of some discussions we had with parents about students that were sent to the community college, cross-enrolled at the community college, about some issues that were being discussed in the class that the parents were concerned with. I, this was a communications class. On Friday, I had a call from a parent, high school student at the community college, taking some level of sociology. Again, content of the class they were extremely concerned with. And, and this only question I asked, because you guys are doing great things, they're doing great things. This seems to be just a really, to those parents, it is a major issue in the immediate sense. But I guess my question is, how is it that those high school students are being sent to the community college? And I was on the school board many, many moons ago. But when I, when I was on the school board, they, basically those kids were taking AP courses to. But now it seems like we've gone to dual enrollment to accommodate some of that. And there are some things, though it's not everything, that are creating concern for parents in, in that realm of curriculum, I guess, that don't have anything to do with teaching math, science, phonics, those types of things. It seems to be levels of, some levels of indoctrination and things that are going on that parents are extremely concerned with. And especially for, for public school students, K through 12 students that are being subjected to these things. So I guess my question is, is there any thoughts of reforming, going back to AP, where we do maybe some of this dual enrollment we do away with? Why are we sending those kids down to the high school? And I don't want you to belabor this. We can talk about this at another time. But I feel like this was a perfect opportunity to say something about that. You know, because simply, we got to protect the hearts, souls, and minds of those kids.
If you want to, you may get dealt with that situation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. We, we respect that, your thoughts and other thoughts. And I've been involved and worked with the, with some of the folks at the, at the community college around this situation and talked to some parents. One of the keys to Davie County Schools is to be flexible. We have to remain the positive, and as you've said, we have to, well, we have to be attractive to parents. And we serve 47,000, 43,000 citizens and folks. We do offer AP courses. We have more children enrolled in AP courses, over 235 or 40 kids enrolled in AP courses. As a choice, we have just a little bit less than 200 kids that enroll and take college courses. We don't send them there. I don't, I'm not contesting your words, but they, they choose, well, they, they choose to go there. That's a choice. And then in order to remain viable and again, attractive, and this aligns itself with our enrollment staying where it is to some degree, that we do provide flexibility, if you will. One of the things, and Mr. Jones, when you referenced in the past how kids were taking AP courses, you're exactly right. One of the things that the state changed that has made, probably enticed more kids to go take community college courses is the weighting of the courses. An advanced placement course used to count as a weight of six. And a college course counted as a weight of five. And then an honors course at the high school would count as a four and a half on a 4.0 GPA scale. Now, again, state regulations, probably three years, four, five years ago, the state said that a college course and an AP course are the same weight. They're both a five, if you will. So there's no change there. And, and then in partnering with the community college, we can offer this set of courses and they can offer some of their courses. Now, some of those do overlap, but there's a tremendous amount of those courses. And not necessarily in the sociology and things, but comes the welding and the EMS and the fire class and those things that we're starting. All of that is part of this opportunity that we'll have. So I hope that answers. We respect what you're saying. I agree with you. I do know that some of those parents were addressed. What we strongly encourage and we'll try to do, make sure we do our part is that parents do know what courses they're stepping into. I mean, still their responsibility to read the syllabus and those kind of things. But that's in part why a lot of our children are choosing to go to the community college.
Thank you so much. And I think part of my discussion with those parents is that I think they are concerned parents. I think they do pay attention to what's happening with their kids. This is the reason they know what's going on. I think they're being broadsided by some of this, what's being taught in the classroom is not what's being indicated.
Respect that.
In the syllabus.
Absolutely.
So thank you for answering that question. And thank you for all y'all do. I mean.
Other curriculum questions?
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for having us. We're going to change gears now and talk a little bit about HR and staffing. If you want the full version of the HR update, I just presented it at the, at the board meeting last week. So that's a 30-minute version, but I'm not going to give you the 30-minute version tonight. I promise it's much shorter. Just to remind you, as far as big picture, bird's eye view, we have about 830 permanent employees. These are not all full-time, but about 830 permanent with 530 certified and 300 classified, which makes us, I believe, the second largest employer in Davie County. When we look at that as far as the Davie County Schools budget, that means that staffing or HR makes up 84 to 87% of our budget, which also means that Mr. Harris and I need to work very carefully together as we, as we walk through each year. You have seen a slide similar to this in the past, but I wanted to put this back in front of you with a, with another arrow added. We continue to track the increase of personnel costs. And I'm sure that you all as businessmen and as commissioners have seen something similar. Even if we look at the beginning of last year to the beginning of this year, and we're looking at the increases in retirement in orange, those percentages you see climb up and the increases in the healthcare costs climbing up in the teal color. But even from the beginning of last school year to the beginning of this school year, we've seen a significant increase in the, in the cost of personnel. And as you know, oftentimes, these increases don't necessarily come with increase and, or additional dollars, depending on how our staff are paid, whether they're paid from local funds, federal funds, grant funds, you name it. I do want to add to this, as you know probably already, the state has increased that minimum hourly rate for permanent employees from $13 an hour last year to $15 an hour this year. That's wonderful for our employees, but it also creates some other problems we'll talk about as I move on. I will also add to this slide, not that I've listed it here, but last year, you as a commission provided support for the school system to help us raise our teacher supplement from five and a half to eight percent. That is a huge, a huge win for the teachers and for the staff in our district. Both a major accomplishment that's taken years to get there, but also really a vote of affirmation and support of staff. So thank you. That does help us attract high-quality teachers. And I will always preach from the mountaintops that the quality of our school system is dependent on the quality of our employees, always. You were going to ask a question. All right. So I'll go on and look at some five, five-year trend data. In our most recent school board meeting, we had auditors reporting who had come in and audited us financially. And they talked a little bit about our five-year trend data and specifically noted that even though we've had a reduction in benefit-eligible employees, we have seen a rise in cost. So when you look at this, if we look at our student projections or our allotments that we have over time, that, that student allotment that's been projected dropped 1.7%. However, our number of staff dropped 4.69%. So we're, we're reducing staff more than we're reducing students when you look at that. However, if you, again, look at these bars with healthcare and retirement costs going up, we're still seeing an increase in that bottom, that bottom line, that bottom dollar. So overall, the annual cost per employee is up 37.29% in the last five years. And that, again, was pointed out by our auditor in our last board meeting. Now, as we look at teacher attrition, each year, the HR department does a report with the state and we look at the attrition of teachers over time. We tend to fall somewhere between 420 and 425 teachers on a given year. Again, that depends on Title I funded positions, grant-funded positions, and so on. So there's a little fluctuation as well as the number of students that we have enrolled. This last year, we had 414 teachers. When we look at the losses, we tend to lose somewhere between 35 and 40. Last year, we lost 42, so up just a tick. But again, staying in that typical range of about 10%. I will say, again, not only the support as far as, as the local supplement makes a difference, but there are other things that make a difference. The way that people feel supported, and I know Benita talked about this when we came and presented before. Each year, we have a Beginning Teacher Academy called the BT Academy. And we have an E-Cubed Academy where we bring in all new hires who've taught in other places. And one of the things that we ask them on the very first day is, why Davie County? Why did you choose to come here? Because with a teacher shortage, you could be anywhere. Why did you choose Davie County? And a lot of times, the results, what we hear from them has to do with culture. It has to do with what they, what they want to be part of. And so that's really important. We have even had new teachers and new administrators who have said, I watched your school board meeting. I watched your county commissioner meeting. And so we might not think about that, think about some of our board, board members in the, in the room who've heard this as well. We don't necessarily think about that, but the professionalism, the collaboration, the support, those things make a difference. It makes people go, I think I would rather choose there instead of there. And so I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank you for the support over the years. We are holding our own. Now, an area that is a little more challenging for us right now is actually recruiting and retaining classified staff. So when we talk about classified staff, these are folks who are not certified teachers. They're not counselors, they're not media coordinators, they're not school administrators. These are the folks that we typically associate with the service industry. We're talking about bus drivers and instructional assistants. In the past, we've called them teacher assistants or TAs. Custodians, school nutrition, maintenance, transportation, office support, all of them fall under the classified staff. So when you look at this table, this allows us to compare our vacancies on day one from last year to this year. And we are continuing to track this, particularly coming out of COVID. You all know throughout COVID, we have seen signing bonuses, we have seen now hiring, we have seen hours adjusted in restaurants, we've seen closures. This is impacting us as well. So we're tracking this very carefully and trying to figure out how to address it. I have to say, these are essential jobs. We cannot operate schools without classified staff. So again, these are the hardest to recruit and to retain. We started this school year with 27 classified vacancies. If you remove the substitutes and the temporary employees that we had plugging holes, it would have been 41.5, which is astronomical. That number has come down a little bit, but we continue to fluctuate with some resignations and some additions. I do want to look at some of these lines specifically. The bus driver shortage has been a national crisis. It truly has been. You've seen it on the news, you've read it in the paper. It's, it's really an issue. Our numbers look much better there. If you look from 2021 to 2022, we dropped from 12.5 vacancies to five vacancies. That really means 10 routes, because I count one person covering a morning route and an afternoon route, and that might actually be two people. But five vacancies that are listed there. I will say, even though that number looks better, it does not represent how painful it has been to open this school year with busing. And you may have heard from some of the, some of the pains. I will say we've been strategic in getting staff trained in the highest needs, but some of the backlog of getting folks trained comes from staffing issues at the state level with the trainers. We've had bus drivers running double routes. Jeremy Miller and his staff have done some collapsing of bus routes where we could. So we've actually parked two or three buses in the last year or so, even though our enrollment has actually gone up a little bit. Even yet, we've had assistant principals, we've had principals, we've had bookkeepers, we've had teachers taking on bus routes to keep them rolling. So this looks good, but I want you to know the story behind it. The instructional assistant line, you can see, is one of our biggest challenges. So that number continues to grow from 12 to 17 if we compare from year to year, day one. And we filled seven of those with temporary, with temporary folks. Again, more resignations and movements in this area. And we'll talk about a strategy to recruit them in a minute. The custodians, you can see, appear more stable, from four to three from one year to the next. Part of this is because we have had to go and contract out. So at Davie High School, we've contracted with Bud Services to come in. We do maintain two daytime custodial positions, what we call day porters to cover restrooms, cafeteria general needs during the day. However, I have to say, with the recent resignation, we are down to one custodian at Davie High School during. School during first shift. That is for 1,700 students, pushing 2,000 when you count staff there. So, we are having difficulty filling that position and are having to turn back to Bud Services. Where that creates problems is that we typically, when we hire these classified positions, they're typically dual roles, and we ask them to drive a bus as well. So, if we have to turn to Bud Services and hire a day porter, then that means we're also losing the opportunity for a bus driver that we desperately need at Davie High. So, fixing one problem creates another. You'll see that our school nutrition looks like we're in worse shape, but there's more behind that story. We're actually in much better shape. Mr. Otranto has come in as our new director, and he's worked really hard to staff those vacancies either with substitutes or with fill-ins, in some cases, with retirees who've worked for school nutrition. So, we're actually in much better shape than the numbers really tell the story. But if you'll take a look at transportation and maintenance, these are highly skilled, difficult-to-fill positions, where we are competing with the marketplace. We are competing with everyone else who wants to hire a mechanic or hire someone in these skilled labor areas. We don't have huge turnover, but when we have these positions, we struggle to fill them. We've had a mechanic position at the bus garage open for months that we have yet been able to fill, and this goes back to the safety of rolling buses and keeping our kids safe. So, again, we know this is an area that needs our attention. I do want to share some positives and things that we are doing that are making a difference. First of all, last year, we started local job fairs. So, you may have seen us with an orange tent somewhere. We have been in parking lots, at Walmart, and in front of Maddie Cakes. We have been at farmers markets. We have been here at the Moxville Town Park, but we had nine this past summer from April to September, and of the contacts we made, we were able to hire 40% of them. So, it is worth our time. It's worth being out there in the sun and reaching those folks, and we'll continue to do that. We have increased that hourly wage, as we talked about before, to $15. We've also used some of our ESAR funds to provide retention bonuses for these positions. I mentioned collapsing bus routes. I've already mentioned hiring creatively, using some substitute and temporary positions. The instructional assistants, as you remember on that last slide, is an area that we're struggling with the most, and part of that is because they're required to be, quote, "highly qualified." So, they're supposed to have a two-year degree or two years of equivalent college education, and that's been tough. We have to have these folks, these assistants, in our schools. So, we have developed and implemented our own training program to provide that education for them at no cost, but we're running that through our Canvas module. We've also done a classified salary study and taken some initial steps, and Mr. Harris may talk about that a little bit more, but this has been a project almost a year long. We started last December. We worked with two consultants, one really a guru in finance and one a guru in HR, and they came in and looked at our positions, our pay grades, and our pay steps, and we saw that the vast majority of our employees, they're in the right position, they're at the right pay grade. We did some cleanup with our pay steps. We looked in the HR side of the world. We developed some consistent procedures for placing them on steps and did some initial cleanup with that. But now, longer range, we need to look at our salary schedules that haven't been addressed in many, many years, because as the state has increased what I call the floor and raised to $13 and then raised to $15, we've not done anything to the upper end. So, it's compressed the salary tables, and that means that folks who are walking in the door may be making the exact same amount as someone who's been with us for many years and may even have a leadership role in that. So, because of that, you'll see the last bullet here is that we've implemented supplements for lead custodians and cafeteria managers, because they are taking on more responsibility than that entry-level person coming in. And so, that's a way that we have helped address that. And now, I will turn it over to Mr. Harris to talk about funding.
Good evening. As you can see, I'm going to spend some time talking about COVID funding and what we received. Talk a little bit about that. As you'll see, we received seven categories of COVID relief funding. These funds are provided to assist with the mitigation of COVID, both the spread of the virus as well as overcoming barriers for instruction. At this point, five of those seven categories have expired. They had expiration dates on them, and so, the last one expired in September of this year. The last two, ESAR 2 and ESAR 3, they expire in September of '23 is ESAR 2, and ESAR 3 expires in September of '24. These funds are granted with a specific guidance, requiring plans to be submitted over two years ago. And so, we could make some modifications to parts of the plan, but the plan really had to stay static in what we had. And so, it becomes information, we kind of had to forecast what we would need in the next three or four years to build these plans, and we took a look at it. So, as you take a look at it, these seven categories, the allotments totaled about $17.2 million. These allotments were to address just a broad spectrum of needs from PPE, when we were combating the virus, to staff devices, to student devices, positions to assist with pandemic-driven student concerns, student instructional needs within the approved allotment guidelines is really what it boils down to. These funds are provided to support our entire student body, student population, whether it's special needs, reg ed students and everything. It's very clear, very specific in where we had to spend money, depending on what type of category it was. And then, it's really to address something that we had never seen before, and nobody really knew what it was for, so we started working and building around that. We take a look at our expenditures. We've expended about 73% of the dollars so far. That leaves about 27% that we will spend through this year and through next year. As I said, we built a plan, and our plan met the guidelines the federal government laid out for us. We had to be very vigilant in the fact that where we spent money, it had to match where we said we were going to spend it, but it still met the requirements of those plans. I'm happy to say, of this five categories that have already expired, we've not had to revert any money. We've spent everything that they gave us, and within the plans that were laid out, meeting their guidelines, and I feel very comfortable when we go to audit, because we will be audited on all of it. We will meet the audit requirements where we need to be. And everything that we spent money on, one of our true goals was, is it necessary and is it reasonable? And that's what everything we've spent has met both of those requirements when we took a look at it. As I said, we've got about 27% left to spend in the next two years, to finish this year and next year, and then we will close the year out this year in September with ESAR 2. We will exhaust the remaining dollars next year for ESAR 3. Last slide I want to talk about is just a little bit about categories, where we've spent money, just so you kind of have a feel, should you have questions or whatever if they arise. First category is personnel cost. Personnel cost is about 40% of what we've spent. That has to do with positions that we've brought in to address needs of students. That's retention bonuses that we talked a little bit about. That's included inside of that. Additional responsibility stipends for our staff, whether it be summer school or accelerator camp or whatever the case may be, it's all related to those type of things. Contract services, that was around instructional device installation, social emotional support, and teacher professional development to meet the needs as we changed instructional patterns and how we went about teaching our students in this pandemic time. Supplies and materials, this includes the Chromebooks for our students when we had to go to one-to-one and go to remote learning. COVID transmission reduction supplies, so PPE, cleaning supplies, misters to be able to spray rooms as children left to help mitigate some of the risk for transmission. Again, summer school supplies, and then digital teaching as we prepare the digital teaching arena. Capital outlay, this is money that we spent to outfit our classrooms K8 to meet the digital teaching and learning arena that we have stepped into. And then, the final category is related to school nutrition as they prepared for remote meals, both on campus and off campus. So, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Wallace.
I just had a quick question on that.
Yes, sir.
In terms of the personnel salary, have you guys kind of built that structurally so that when these funds run out in two years, that you're going to assimilate those positions or the temporary positions? Or how are y'all going to address? Because 40% of $17 million is a lot of money.
Yep. And some of the positions were created as temporary. You will have this position until September of 2020 or June of 2024. Some of the positions we introduced, knowing that we were going to have to keep those positions, instructional coaches, for example, their roles are to grow the capacity of our teachers, and so, we will continue to fund those as we take a look at that and try and figure out what it, because we'll see reductions in other areas, because we've built capacity in our staff that's there. Does that help answer part of that? And so, also, keep in mind, it's retention bonuses as well. They will only go as long as we have ESAR dollars and everything else. So, okay?
And summer school salaries and all of the tutoring and summer school salaries.
That was mandated by the state. We had to build in programs over the last two to three years.
I don't want anybody to think that's all positions.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
But that's what it is. I mean, we were planful in those positions and what they needed to be and address specific topics that were identified.
Mr. Jones, to your point, that's causing us quite the consternation to look at that, because we've been able to build something. But our goal was to build people, to build capacity, use quality people to build capacity, knowing that we would get to this point at some time. Absolutely. But we are already talking about that, I assure you, although we have a year and a half or so, or almost two years with some of the funding. I'll be glad, I know it's a mouthful, I'm sorry. It's hard to do a big overview of that, but I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate you, all of you, and it has been very hard. Y'all know that. It's been extremely hard. But the partnership and the relationships that we've shared with this group, Brian has jumped in, sorry, Mr. Barnett, he's jumped in, and I'll have to tell you, it was on a weekend, but I'm out on a pond, and somebody goes, "Is that Jeff?" And I turn around, there's Brian in miles. I said, "Well, you're a fisherman?" And he said, "Absolutely." I said, "I can't believe this." But either way, another good thing in common, but Brian has jumped in, and we've had great conversations, heard from his former employers and folks, and super nitty was good. So, thank you all very much, and we look forward to continuing our partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we'll move to our public hearings. We have a fiscal year 2023 budget ordinance for the opioid settlement funds. I'll call Ms. Robin West.
Good evening. Before you tonight, we have the National Opioid Settlement. These funds are from the pharmaceutical and drug distribution companies that were involved in lawsuits brought by the state and other local governments due to the opioid pandemic. As part of the settlement, Davie County will receive $3,304,754 between 2022 and 2038, so, over the next several years. So, we're required to track the settlement in a separate special revenue fund, so that's why a public hearing is required tonight to get that set up. This is also separate from other settlements that we discussed in past board meetings, and so far, we've received about $275,000 over two payments. We have to use these funds for opioid-related expenditures, and our current plan is to enhance the community paramedic program to address opioid needs in our community. The county is also using other funds to help with opioids in our community. We'll use these funds to support and expand our response efforts, but supplemental grants will need to be sought out to sustain and build on these efforts. So, right now, what we're doing with other funds is we have a substance abuse counselor in the detention center. We're spending some funds on social work services, as well as a bit in employee wellness for first responders and staff. So, in the future years, this will be rolled up into our annual budget appropriation and discussions, so we'll talk more about that every year until 2038, when we get those final payments. Let me know if you have any questions.
Do you have any questions for Robin?
So, what's the specific amount that, do you know, that you're giving to the community paramedic program?
Well, right now, so far, what we've received from this settlement is $270,610. So, we're kind of, you know, we're getting little bits here and there, okay? They have a payment schedule scheduled out. What we've gotten is not exactly according to the payment schedule, because it's sort of vague. It says spring and summer and that kind of thing, so we don't really know how we're going to predict those payments. So, we're trying to start off a little bit slow by adding to the program that's already there. So, what you have before you tonight is what we expect to receive or what we've told we're going to receive by the end of fiscal year 2023, June 30th.
So, when you kind of have better numbers about how much is going where, I would like to see them.
Sure, absolutely, yes. So, right now, what we've got before you is to add to the community paramedic program, that was a second position and related expenses. So, it's not equal to the $270,000 that we've gotten so far, but again, we wanted to start small, because $3.3 million is a lot of money, but over 16 to 18 years.
It's a little.
It's a little bit.
Yeah.
Over a long period of time, so.
Anyone else have any questions for Robin? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. I'll call Mr. Vogler.
Chair, this is today and now for a public hearing on the amendment to the Davie County 2023 budget for the use of opioid settlement funds. There's been new notice given pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina general statutes in Davie County by way of de-publication notice in a public hearing in newspaper general circulation in Davie County on October 27, 2022, and November 3, 2022, as required by law. Clerk to the Board has attached an affidavit showing publication in said newspaper. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. And we have one individual that's signed up, Ms. Julie Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I got a tickle. Davie has most recently established these services and supports in response to the opioid crisis, and Robin mentioned several of them, the opioid crisis response team, that is, community paramedics, and a counselor that goes with them, and an opioid pregnancy program that's supplemented by another grant. The opioid settlement funds cover health department staff, community paramedics, and detention center involvement, and the EMS Bridge MAT grant is providing funding for these initiatives. We are really blessed in Davie to have the presence of Southern Family Medicine, a provider of medication-assisted treatment in Davie, and we're blessed with volunteerism of those facilitating the SAFE program. It stands for Substance Abuse Family Education Program and other addiction support groups. These are wonderful interventions, but we all know, more can be done, and we must be proactive. It is recognized that those incarcerated while actively prescribed and using medication-assisted treatment must be allowed to continue their treatment. However, evidence from the field shows the best practice is to offer MAT to those upon incarceration before they suffer from withdrawal. That's not a requirement, but that is the humane thing to do. Lives are saved by allowing people to start MAT upon incarceration, and I've provided you with a link for that evidence. Rather than leaving them to be released still craving an opioid that will often obtain, they will often obtain upon release overdose and die. Therefore, introducing MAT to those incarcerated is a proactive approach to reducing overdose deaths. I'm here to suggest to you that the Davies should use a proactive approach for those residents who are addicted to opioids then incarcerated. Those detained in our detention centers should be treated with medications for opioid use disorder to reduce recidivism and death because of opioid use. Please consider allocating funds from the opioid settlement to offer MAT in the detention center, and I provided you with a link on MAT in the criminal justice system, and I've already given it to your secretary. given it to your secretary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you all aware of that? Have you all had discussion about that, about what Ms. Julie's talking about?
Yes. We have with some of the other.
Others that wish to come forward at this public hearing, if you could come to the podium, state your full name for the Board and then comment. Ms. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as Board Chair, so that you may close the public comments section of this public hearing. And then at that point in time, give the Board the opportunity to discuss among yourself what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Okay, thanks, sir. All right, is there any discussion regarding the matter? Anyone like to make a motion?
I thought Mark was going to say something.
No, no.
I just would like for us to make sure that we bring some stakeholders to the table as we decide how to disperse this money, and not necessarily only staff, but members of the community who are affected by the opioid crisis, so that we can realize where it really needs to be spent.
Ms. Chairman, a motion to approve.
And Ms. Chair, you'll need to close the public comments section also.
Okay. We'll close the public comments section now?
Yeah, for your motion.
I'll make, thank you, Ms. Chair. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Bye-bye. Next, we'll move the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, a motion to have a second.
My second.
Yeah, Mark, I have it.
Motion, Mark, at the second. Okay, all in favor, consent agenda? Bye-bye. Thank you. All right. We'll move to old business, zoning map amendment twenty-two oh-six, Blackwater Investments. We'll see. I guess we'll call on, right, Mr. Barnett?
Yes, Mr. Chair. At our last meeting in October, you all postponed, tabled the zoning map amendment two thousand twenty-two six for the Blackwater investment for tonight's meeting. We, there were some conversations since that meeting. We did officially close the public hearing. So, at this point, the floor is open to discussion amongst yourselves of what steps you want to take on this particular resounding request.
Okay, thank you. All right. Want to have any discussion or?
Before we take action on this, I indicated I wanted to make a statement about this, about what's come up as apparent conflict of interest. And when this was first brought to my attention, I was confused initially because, for the following reasons. I'm, I'm involved with several different businesses, and last summer, summer of twenty twenty-one, one of the businesses I'm involved with, we decided we want to look for land to build a building. I looked up six oh-one, I looked at three different parcels, made an offer on two, they were denied, a third one, I never made an offer. Early January of twenty twenty-two, found this piece, it's four acres. It's, we reached out to the people, as someone, Ms. Wilson, said earlier, the property was owned by people in Wake Forest. We reached out to them, it'd been in an estate, and they wanted to get rid of it. And, and as a bonus, it's owned highway business, which was perfect. And my business, my intent is to buy this, I've already bought it, but to build a building on it and use it for a business I have. I do not, I know these developers, I don't know the owner, I have no business relationship with them, and I don't think this rises to the level of conflict. I talked to Mr. Vogler about it, and I would, you know, certainly ask him to weigh in on this, so.
What you're dealing with is under one sixty-D, which is the new zoning statute, planning and zoning that the state adopted. And then, if you recall, we had to go through and redo our chapter on rezoning to comply with all the different sections in one sixty-D. And now, one sixty-D dash one oh-nine, conflicts of interest, governing board, a governing board member shall not vote on any legislative decision regarding development regulation, and this would be a development regulation because it falls within the definition of the one sixty-D one oh-two, which is anything from storm water control regulations to zoning regulations and rezoning and that sort of thing, and zoning ordinances. But in any event, a governing board member shall not vote on any legislative decision regarding development of regulation adopted pursuant to this chapter where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. Governing board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment or zoning amendment if the landowner of the property is subject to the zoning petition or the applicant for the text amendment is a person who, with whom the member has a close familial business or other associational relationship. So, if, if there was some type of associational or business type of relationship, or if there was any contracts whereby if this gets rezoned, then I want to buy your property too, or whatever from that standpoint, that falls within that second section. If there's an objection raised, the General Assembly has determined how that is to be answered under E in that same section, one sixty-D dash one oh-nine, which says if an objection is raised to a board member's participation at or prior to the hearing or vote on a particular matter, and that board member does not recuse himself or herself, then the remaining members of the boards shall by majority vote rule on that objection. So, if, if Mr. Reniger does not recuse himself, then at that point in time, it is incumbent upon this Board then to vote and rule by majority vote as to whether or not he should or should not recuse himself, or whether or not he would be allowed to vote or not to vote. So, that, that falls within, in the Board's purview itself, and that is something that the General Assembly has placed upon your shoulders at that point in time.
The only, the only question I have in regards to this is, you know, in terms of the land being adjacent to what we're about to vote on in terms of rezoning, and I don't play at those levels, but it seems to me somewhat commonsensical to understand that the rezoning of this might appreciate the value of the property that was purchased in January.
Then you're asking me?
Well.
That, that, that's an opinion question. I'm not a real estate appraiser. You know, I, you would think maybe it would, and then you also think maybe from what some of the individuals said, that their properties would be devalued. So, I don't know. I can't answer that, not being, being an appraiser. I can tell you what the law is and what, how it reads.
I'm going to be very transparent with you. What, what troubles me is the fact that would we be having this discussion if there hadn't have been an editorial in the paper? And as a Board, we need to be forthcoming and transparent. And if we, any of us own property near anything that we're talking about rezoning, we, it shouldn't take an editorial in the paper for us to come forward, because we need to maintain the trustworthiness of our citizens.
Well, I will repeat what I said. If I thought, again, I bought this for myself and I intend to use it for myself, it never crossed my mind. I mean, it, it didn't. And that's until I was made aware of this editorial, I would appreciate it a phone call, but no one called me. So, that's all I have to say.
And then another question that was brought to me by a citizen was the fact that, that you, as the property owner, weren't listed on the mail when they, when the zoning notices were sent out. There was, there was no listing for that property. So, if that was just oversight or whatever it was, we need to make sure that we don't have things like that happening again as well.
Okay. Further discussion or comments?
Ms. Chairman, I guess the thing that I'm going to have to say is that everybody seems to know the critical importance of having all the industrial and commercial property that we can get in the county to offset the cost of residential property that's building in the county. We have a land use plan. I'm not touching on your instance because I think the lawyer, lawyer has already let us know that there's not a conflict there. But we have a land use plan that says this area here is designated as potential growth area for industrial, commercial property. If we choose to ignore that, then we really don't need to go to all the expense and the time involved in creating a land use plan. With the Economic Development Council that is out here searching for industry and commercial to come to Davie County, if we don't listen to what they say and work with them, then we really don't need them. And our Economic Development Director, as hard as he works to get industry to come here, and every other place in the nation is looking to take the industry that, that, industry and commercial that we have coming here, that wants to come here. It was mentioned a while ago that our industrial parks, we have enough industrial parks, but there's no buildings out here for future companies to come to. And that's why it's so important that we support our land use plan, our Economic Development Council, and our Economic Develop Director. And I'm going to make a motion that we approve.
Before any motions are made, and I'll, I'll remind you that the statute doesn't say you may vote. It says the vote, that the remaining members of the Board shall by majority vote rule on an objection. There's an objection that's been made at this point in time on that, so I think that this Board has to rule on that objection first before you can get to, to a vote on the underlying issue.
So, I'm hearing that we all need to vote to recuse Commissioner Ray or not? Is that what you're telling me?
To either recuse him or to allow him to vote, one of the two.
I'll make the motion that we allow him to vote.
All right, I'll second the motion, we allow him to vote. All in favor? Deny? Or oppose? Two.
So, it doesn't carry, there's not a majority then? Because the statute says the remaining members shall by majority vote rule on the objection.
Then what option does that leave us?
Now, now you move forward, well, that, that motion failed. A lack of votes. The Roberts rules, then you go on to whatever else you're going to do with regards to this particular matter.
Well, let, let me just say this. I've served with Terry for years, and I, I respect Terry, what you say here, but that is not, clearly, clearly there's conflict here. Now, I know we voted differently, there's clearly a conflict. I don't know that it's purposeful. Don't, I, I would never say that. But clearly, there's a conflict here. And Richard, I serve on the EDC Board. I think other commissioners, other members of that Board know that I support economic development in Davie County, creating jobs. But this, this one, this one is, I have, I have some real problems with this, what we're doing here. And let me just say this. Last, at the last meeting, part of our rationale for deferring the meeting was, I asked, I asked two questions. One was, was there a meeting with, because the, obviously, we're going to Moxville, bringing this development into, annexing it into their, into their town limits. I asked at that time, at that meeting, was there a meeting with, with Chief Keaton set up to discuss the options as related to the Weimar Davie Fire Department? Since it's two and a half miles from the property, and the Moxville Fire Department is five miles from the property, has that meeting taken place?
Not to my knowledge.
I asked if that, also at that time, if there were options, because the issue here, I think, is the rationale for annexation is to get infrastructure to this, which these developers need, to their land. Were there options that we could discuss that would allow the county to get the sewer to that property or the water, whatever necessitates to be there, without the, the issue of annexation? Mr. Van Hoy and the developers indicated at that time they were willing to have those discussions. Have those discussions taken place?
I don't think they've reached out to us specifically since our last meeting.
Okay, all right.
May I address that?
Sure.
We indicated we were willing for the towns to have those discussions.
Right.
It is not up to the developer, and we lack the authority to bring those.
No, I get, I get it.
Okay. Do we, is there any, any further discussion regarding the matter? Richard, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think we're at a stalemate.
So, Mr. Vogler, so at this point?
The motion to refuse failed.
Yep.
So, if you wish to make any type of motion, then you move forward with whatever type of motion you want to make, whether to approve or to deny.
All right. Do you want to make, want to make a motion to approve or deny? Ms. Board.
I make a motion that we deny at this time. I think the citizens have spoken what they wish for their community and what the questions about, and the unanswered questions and the meetings that haven't taken place, I, I don't think we're at the point that we need to be.
Motion to deny. A second. Okay. All in favor of deny? All oppose?
And Ms. Chair, at this point, you've just denied, that's all.
Do you want to make a further motion?
I would make the motion again to approve for all the reasons stated previously.
Okay, a motion to approve. Do I have a second to approve?
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion to approve and a second to approve. All in favor to approve?
Can we discuss it more?
Yeah.
Obviously, this is, we got issues, but what I would say is, what Mr. Poindexter said, if, if we don't want any more growth, we just need to say we don't want any more growth. That's an issue. But if we've got people that are coming into our county with capital to deploy or access to capital, that's going to create jobs in areas that we've identified for growth, then his point is valid. We need to give them their due. And again, I, it's a tough decision, but that's the reason I support this. Thank you.
Motion in a second to approve. All in favor to approve? Motion and a second to approve. All in favor to approve? All in favor to oppose? You two. Thank you. Next, we'll go to old business number two, Advanced Fire Department lease. Call Mr. Barnett?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman. At your last meeting, you asked us to meet with the folks at the Advanced Fire Department to work through the lease agreement. Both parties have met, and both parties have come to favorable terms on moving forward with the lease agreement. Mr. Vogler's here, if you have any specific questions about the agreement. But at this time, we're ready to execute it at staff.
Okay. Do we have further discussion or questions regarding the, the lease content? All right, so we have a motion to approve the lease as proposed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Okay. All in favor to approve the lease? Bye-bye. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll go to new business. Do we have any new business for us this evening? Okay. Seeing the county manager report, Mr. Barnett?
Mr. Chair, as part of my report tonight, I have a couple items I want to put out there. To start with, I'd like to thank Sheriff Hartman, him and his folks. Last week, we had a very successful Halloween here in Davie County. They had a very well-oiled operation for the event that went downtown. As a newbie to the county, I was quite impressed how well that went off without any hitches. So I want to thank the sheriff and his folks. Also want to thank our registered deeds, Ellie Thunderburg. She had her event here for our veterans as part of her initiative to get more of them to sign up and get their forms taken care of. She held a breakfast here in our building. We probably exceeded fire code with the amount of veterans that showed up, but it was a very well put-together event. So again, thank you. I want to thank Davie County Public Library. They wrote a grant that allowed us to receive over 200, 200 books for our folks who, who are using our services at the Health Department, Child Welfare, and the Davie Center for Violence Prevention. This way, the, the children who come through this program will have reading material. I want to thank Senior Services for a grant they received. We are going to have three document shredding events in 2023. For any of our seniors who would like to have those documents that have important and critical data about themselves shredded, the Senior Services is going to be able to provide those events. Like to recognize our Fire Marshal, perfect timing to walk back in, Cameron Webb, who was a recipient of the 2022 Investigative Team Award from the North Carolina Association of Arson Investigators. Mr. Webb was part of a team that worked on an arson investigation back in 2018. I know that seems like a while ago, but I think due to COVID, that delayed the recognition of this award. So I want to make sure that he is, and we notify, we, we recognize him. I'm getting my words mixed up. And then, like to also recognize, I know you just left, but I'd like to recognize Terry Brawley. He was named by the Triad Business Journal as a 2022 Power Player. I think that is important as we continue to look for those economic development opportunities. I know how hard him and his staff are working. And then finally, as part of my report, I'd like to recognize our new, I guess it's not new or old, or however you want to call it, new EMS director, Mr. Joseph Ashburn. As part of a process that we went through with our staff, we assessed several candidates, and Mr. Ashburn rose to the top. He's currently our interim. So as of tonight, I would like to officially remove that interim title and make him fully the EMS director. Mr. Chair, it's your prerogative, but if he'd like to say a few words, it's up to you.
Joseph, I'd be honored for you to come up here and talk to us for a minute. It's been a long thing, and you've been, you've been holding us together. So thank you for what you've been doing.
Thank you all. Thank you for the opportunity to go through and do this. I think I've talked on this horn, and one of the things I wanted to go through and really build on was the foundation that EMS already had from the past to the present, so we, so I can go through and lead to the future. But everybody who was there ahead of me and taught me all this stuff over the years, I'm going to go through and carry forward that and go through and build on that for the future, go through and take care of the citizens of Davie County, and try to work on professional development for all the staff to go through and have a succession plan. So that way, whenever it comes time to move and do different things, then we have staff that's going to fall right in place to go through and do that. And that's one of the things I hold, hold hardly, because I treat people the way I'd want to be treated in my families. And that's one of the things I've, I really got respect from the staff on. So thank you for the opportunity to go through and do this, and I would, I'll do my best to do the best job I can go through and do.
Thank you, Joseph.
And that's it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Barnett. Okay, next we'll move to Mr. comments. I'll start with Ms. Finney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to start off thanking everyone who came to speak tonight. I appreciate every citizen and leader who comes here for public comment or public hearing and boldly stands for what you believe in, and to speak your mind and tell us what we need to hear. Chief Naylor, I thank you for continuing to do that on a regular basis. And I promise you, I hear you. And we're not going to give up, sir. And I just want to say congratulations to Joseph. I'm sorry, I'll get emotional about this. Joseph Ashburn has been a dedicated servant to this county for a long, long time. He has given so much of his life to this county, and we can never repay him. But I can tell you, I'm ecstatic that he is in the position that he is in. I believe he was the perfect person for the job. He will put that place where it needs to be. He has the respect and the love and honor of his employees. And side by side with the work that Cameron's doing at the Fire Marshal's Office, I know they're going to take really good care of us. And I'm just very proud of you, Joseph. Thank you so much.
Mr. Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sometimes we have to agree to disagree. I, I tell you, I'm, I'm, that zoning request issue may have been one of the toughest I've had in four terms here. But sometimes we just have to agree to disagree. Thanks to everyone who came here to speak tonight, to make your voice heard. I'll tell you, there's another way your voice can be heard. Nine thousand of you have already had your voices heard. You got out to vote early. And so tomorrow's Election Day. Tomorrow, we can, we can make things change, not only here in Davie County, but in the state of North Carolina and nationally. We got a big national election here in North Carolina. So I encourage you to, to get out, to get out and vote. And I, I tell you, I just want to, I can't say, words don't convey what you guys coming out here, speaking, just supporting the kids of this county, the families of this county. It, it's, this is just a great place to live because of you, not because of us. And we really, really appreciate your support and thank you, especially for our staff, for all they do, 24/7, they're on call, whether they think they are or not. They are on call 24/7, and we thank you for all you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poindexter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would very much agree with what Mark just said. The last two meetings that we've had have been, have had some very difficult decisions to be made. But what we have to do is think about the good of 43,000 people that live here. And that, that's the way I make my decisions. But anyway, thank all of you for coming out tonight. Thank for the members of the school board coming out tonight. I saw Clint Junker back here a while ago as well, so y'all were fairly well represented tonight. But thank all the staff for all the hard work that they do, and see you here next month, I hope.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight, as always. Appreciate the presentation from the school board. Appreciate all the comment, comments very much. Please vote tomorrow. It's a big day for North Carolina and the United States, so please make your mark. Another big day coming up this week is Veterans Day, and I want to remember all our veterans. I want to thank Ms. Thunderburg for her program. I think that's tremendous. And I think that's going to be great for Davie County. And Mr. Ashburn, thank you for hanging there with us and getting us through a tough time. And I think we got the right man for the job. See you next month. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to appreciate and thank everyone for coming out tonight, obviously going last. Everybody's already kind of covered the topics here. But Joseph, I do want to give you a shout out. Appreciate what you've done. We started this a while back, and you've done, Anita said it all. So, so we appreciate what you've done. Davie County Schools, I can't thank you enough. What makes this county one of the best counties, the best county in the state, is our school system. And, and we continue to have families move here because of Davie County Schools, just like my family did a long while ago. So again, thank you for what you do. Again, tomorrow, get out and let your voice be heard. Please, Election Day, go vote. And again, Veterans Day coming up on, on Friday. And then we have Thanksgiving coming up, so everybody have a great and, and safe Thanksgiving. And we will see everyone back here in December. And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.